Order the Water Works Board meeting for Wednesday, July ninth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty P. M. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Mr. Troxel, would you please take roll call?
Yes, Madam President. Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis. Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Parks Superintendent John Novosich.
Here.
I.T. A.J. Garcia. Neese Engineering Neil Simstad. Public Works Director Chad Nandorf.
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel here.
Thank you. First on the agenda are the minutes of the June eleventh, two thousand twenty-five public meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. I'm sorry, I need to backpedal and announce that the members of this particular board are Tom Schmidt, Kevin Conley, and myself, Robin Arvenitis. Thank you. Minutes are approved three to zero. Moving on to claims. Mr. Troxel, do we have any additional claims for the Water Works Board?
No additional claims, Madam President. Motion to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Claims are approved three to zero. Next on the agenda, we have reports. Are there any staff reports regarding the Water Works Board?
No reports, Madam President.
Thank you. Any council reports regarding the Water Works Board?
Nope.
Moving on, there is no old business, there is no new business. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Water Works Board meeting? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Stormwater Board meeting for July ninth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty-three P. M. The roll call is different than the Water Works Board. It is also a three-member board consisting of myself, Tom Schmidt, and Robin Arvenitis. The first agenda item is the minutes of the June eleventh, two thousand twenty-five public meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Minutes are approved. Mr. Treasurer, are there any claims for the Stormwater Board?
No claims at all, Mr. President.
Moving on then, are there any staff reports regarding the Stormwater Board?
No reports, Mr. President.
Are there any council member reports regarding the Stormwater Board?
None.
There's no old business, no new business. Any business from the floor related to the Stormwater Board? Any business from the floor. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Call to order the redevelopment commission meeting for Wednesday, July ninth, two thousand twenty-five. The time is six thirty-four P. M. The redevelopment commission is comprised of the entire council and also Nicole Kelly, our advisor from the Lake Central School Board, who is with us tonight. Hello, Nicole. Minutes of the June eleventh, two thousand twenty-five public meetings.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes five-zero. Claims, any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Pleasure, the board.
Motion to pay the claims.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes five-zero. Any reports from staff on redevelopment?
No reports, Mr. President.
Council members?
None at this time.
Okay, no old business, no new business. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Utility Board for the Town of Shererville for Wednesday, July ninth, at approximately six thirty-six P. M. The roll call stays the same as the redevelopment. All five councilmen are on the roll call. The first item on the agenda is the minutes of the June eleventh public meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Next is claims. Any additional claims for utilities, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President. Motion to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Reports, any reports from staff on utilities?
I do have one quick report, Mr. President, on the BioSolids Building reconstruction at the wastewater treatment plant. The south side of Phase Two has been demoed completely, and they are starting to dig the foundation for the second half of the new building. And I'm pleased to announce that on the first phase, we had bad soils that we had to remediate, and on this one, they're, all the soils are good, so there's no additional costs on that. Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks.
Any reports from council members on utilities?
No.
No reports. There's no old business and there's no new business. At this time, I'll take business from the floor regarding utilities. Any business from the floor regarding utilities? No business from the floor. We'll move right into the town council meeting. This means adjourned.
I'd like to call the town council meeting for Wednesday, July ninth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty-six tonight to order. The roll call will be the same as the utility board, so I will ask this board for a motion on the minutes of the July eleven, June eleventh, two thousand twenty-five public meeting. Pleasure.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five-zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Pleasure, the board.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five-zero. Jim, you want to do the roll call for staff reports, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Chief Patterson, any reports from fire?
Just like to report, for the month of June, the Shererville Fire Department responded to two hundred and sixty-six EMS-related calls, sixty-three fire-related, for a total of three hundred and twenty-nine total calls for the month of June. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Chief Sormas, any reports?
Nothing to report tonight.
Mr. Novosich, anything from parks?
No report.
Town Engineer Simstad, any reports?
No reports, Mr. Gorman.
And Mr. Nandorf.
I just got a couple of quick updates. The Burr Street reconstruction and water main replacement project is proceeding. Eighteen hundred feet of the four thousand total feet of water main has been installed so far. Storm sewer piping and under drains have been installed, and next week, they will start cutting in the ground for the new pedestrian trail, which will start at Rolling Hills, where we left off with the first project, and proceed down to Seventy-Fifth Avenue. Tomorrow, the Seventy-seventh Avenue to, from U.S. forty-one into Capri Drive, the C.C.M.G. project, will be starting. Concrete work has already been completed, so they will start milling the existing roadway out, and then final paving and striping to follow, hoping the project will be completed by next Friday, July eighteenth. And this is the final road portion for the two thousand twenty-four dash one C.C.M.G., and we'll be closing out that first phase of that project after all the numbers have been submitted to end that.
Excellent. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
I have no reports, Mr. President.
Any council members, reports?
No, sir.
At this time, I will pay, take any public comment regarding the agenda items tonight. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. State your name and your address, please.
Jeff Minar, twelve seventy-nine Poppy Field. Thanks for his time to speak. Thank you, Town Council President. We had a great conversation where we ran against each other a few years back, and we both agreed that God's will would determine the outcome of who won. You won, so I respect that, but I'm just asking you and others to truly think about what's best for the citizens as far as allowing chickens, variants for that, and not give into pressure, and just want to remind all of you that how you vote on this can and use, and will be used in the next election. Just thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Betsy Hunt, twenty-four thirteen Capri Drive. Regarding the proposed ordinance, I'm not sure about chickens in backyards and understand both sides. But my neighbor's property is forty feet from my bedroom window, so I do have an interest in how this ordinance is written. I have neighbors behind me in unincorporated area whose chickens have twice, all twelve of them, come into my yard. So I contacted a few towns who currently allow chickens, such as Griffith, Highland, Valpo, Hobart, and Dyer, and here's what I found and believe should be considered before we even move forward. Let me quote from Griffith's ordinance. "The Griffith Town Council wishes to harmonize the interests of those residents desiring to raise chickens on their residential property and the interests of residents who do not wish to be disturbed in the quality and enjoyment of their life." First of all, our ordinance says chickens and ducks. There's quite a difference between these two different poultry. Ducks are dirty and loud, especially female ducks, go figure, and none of the other towns include ducks. Ducks should not be included. Our ordinance states there shall be no more than ten fowl, it should read chickens, and those with two and a half acres can have no more than twenty chickens. The language should be clear and state that no one can have chickens unless they have one acre or more of land, period. In addition, it should be clearly stated that chickens are for personal use only. This room is forty feet long. My neighbor's forty feet from me. If we are only allowing people with one acre of land to have chickens and only chickens, then why would we use sixty or forty feet from a neighbor's dwelling? Since one acre of land is sufficient to make that distance more like a hundred feet, again, going with the harmonizing interest theme, and it should read from property line, not dwelling, because if you do not clean the coop on a regular basis, weekly basis, the ammonia smell is awful, and wind exists. Hobart requires registration and permits. Anyone wanting chickens must register the coop to get approval from the town. Dogs and cats must be registered. We should definitely require the same. We have language in our ordinance regarding violations, so the need to have a record of where these coops are located is only logical, and violations should be spelled out. Highland allows four to six chickens, but has no real ordinance. They said that they get so many calls and complaints because there's no specific ordinances or policies. Griffith also has language regarding getting letters of consent to the safety committee from adjoining property owners in certain circumstances. Dyer currently has one family with chickens. Their process is to go through the variance procedure, complete the paperwork, submit to the BZA for approval, then it goes to council. The total cost is about five hundred dollars. So these changes should be made to this ordinance before we even go forward, in my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and your address for the record.
Sure. My name's Kevin Oars. Address is twelve seventeen Bemis Heights in Shererville. Yeah, I just would like to comment that as a Shererville resident, whenever I hear of a, a request for a variance or a change in an ordinance, I always wonder, well, what's the cause? And the reason I do that is, especially in this case, the original thought of our original town leaders must have been that livestock inside an urban setting is not good for a variety of safety, health, and quality of life issues that could affect all the residents. So what's changed? Why is there a request for an ordinance? What's the justification? It isn't as if some change in technology or animal husbandry has nullified the original concerns that led to the ban of livestock in an urban setting in Shererville. My understanding is that the ordinance as written would disqualify the vast majority of residents from having chickens anyway. Those few remaining residents that would qualify tend to be of higher than average income and resources, and maybe in political power as well. So nothing's changed. Is this just another example of the haves forcing the will over the have-nots? And doing it at the expense of the health and the safety of the residents. I believe passing an ordinance that the overwhelming majority of residents would not qualify for is undemocratic and non-responsive to our safety. And finally, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that Councilman Johnson is one of the few lucky residents who would qualify to have chickens, and in fact, under this ordinance, you've indicated a desire to do just that. It just strikes me as being a blatant conflict of interest, and I would ask you to recuse yourself from the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Tony Oberman, fifteen twenty-eight Tyler Court. I'm here today to express my opposition to the proposal of allowing backyard chickens in our municipality. While I understand that some residents view backyard chickens as a source of fresh eggs and a way to connect with nature, I believe there are significant and valid concerns that should be considered before permitting such a change. Number one, the noise disturbances. Hens can be surprisingly vocal, particularly after laying eggs, and in a densely populated neighborhood, this could quickly become a serious nuisance. Odor and sanitation. Chicken coops, if not meticulously maintained, can produce strong odors. Accumulated waste can also attract flies, rodents, and other pests, creating an unhealthy environment for nearby residents. The health and safety risks. Chickens carry diseases such as salmonella and campylobacter, which pose risks to both children and adults, especially if proper sanitation is not strictly followed. There are also broader concerns about the potential for avian illnesses to spread in urban environments. The impact on property values. Presence of chicken coops, especially if visible or poorly maintained, may deter potential buyers and reduce overall property values in neighborhoods. Zoning and aesthetic concerns. Our community is zoned for residential use. The introduction, introduction of livestock, no matter how small, alters the character of the area and sets a precedent for further exceptions. Coops and runs, particularly those near property lines, can be unsightly and diminish the visual appeal of a neighborhood. Attracting predators. Chickens may attract predators such as raccoons, coyotes, hawks, stray dogs, and creates an unnecessary hazard for pets, small children, and small children who may be playing outside. The health impacts on vulnerable residents. Feathers, dust, and droppings can aggravate asthma and allergies, especially in young children and older adults living by, living nearby. For all these reasons, I respectfully urge you to oppose or reconsider any ordinance or policy changes that would permit the keeping of chickens in our residential area. Our community's peace, cleanliness, and safety should remain a priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Kristi Nance Marovich, one nine zero zero Govert Drive, Shererville. Today, I'm going to give you some very concrete information from David Fame, Doctor of Veterinary Medicine, Poultry Specialist from U.S. State University. He states that the effects on the economy are also paramount if we allow chickens in our community. It is not responsibly managed, it can significantly increase the probability of disease exposure to commercial industry. He says that disease such as the exotic Newcastle disease, E.N.D., can become present in a small flock of poultry communities. It can cause tremendous poultry death in both the small backyard flocks and in the large commercial poultry operations. It has a large impact on the community. If, as you guys mentioned, you're going to have ducks and chickens together, this is what he says about that. Mixing of species. It is extremely risky to raise multiple species of poultry waterfowl in the same premises, particularly if there is also a chance of exposure to wild birds. And those are the birds that we see flying around our neighborhoods every day. This is how deadly poultry diseases get started, such as the E.N.D. and the A.V.A.N. influenza, AKA the bird flu. That's how those things continue to spread, multiply, and then harm the other chicken populations in our country. The noise, I think, is well documented. I talked at length about that last month, and others have tonight. There is no practical or humane method to quote Decro a male fowl, and it takes a lot of experience and knowledge to properly identify the gender of a young chick. You may not even know you're getting a male chick, and then it's too late. Animal control. I know we have a wonderful animal control department here in Shererville, but you realize you're going to exponentially increase the volume of their work? Because chickens are not respecters of a property line. They don't know when they've crossed over to the neighbor's yard. As you heard from the other young lady up here already, she had twelve chickens migrating into her yard. They are prone to wander at will into a neighbor's yard or garden. Remember that chickens can't. To minimize the impact on neighbors, the chickens must be contained and enclosed and not allowed to roam loose. So how humane is that if you're going to keep them in an enclosed captive environment? How humane is that?
Ma'am, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you. Say your name and your address, please, sir.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Ruben Rizal. I'm from Burrage Drive, right here in Shererville. I remember when I was a kid, on thirty forty-one, there was one light. It flashed red and flashed yellow on the other side. We had cornfields everywhere. That was farmland. We're no longer in that time. This is no longer farmland. We got residents, we got kids. It's a big jump from then to now. Now, if you want chickens, I'm looking at the cost. What's going to cost the city? Then you're going to go, well, they have the rights. Well, everybody had rights. Now you're going to tell me some people have more rights than others? I don't think so. I'm against this chicken thing, not just because I don't want chickens, because other people might want chickens and they can't have it. And that's not, in my opinion, correct. And should we all have chickens? I don't think so. Like I said, we're not farmland no more. Times change. We got to grow up. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and your address, please, sir.
Kevin Dean, nineteen oh five Sir Richard Road in Shererville, Indiana. This issue with the chickens, one of the reasons how come I think we should allow chickens is so people can get their chickens that are humanely treated. You do some research on the internet, you start to find out that the hens that are laying the eggs you're buying in the stores are stuck in a cage that's one foot by one foot for their entire life. This way, you're having chickens producing the eggs for you that are being treated humanely. I understand the concerns people are having about the foul smells, they call it. Where I live, my backdoor neighbor is actually People's Bank. They have a spraying water fountain out in the front of their building, and we had two geese that put up residency there for about six weeks. And these are wild animals. I had some neighbors down the street who were actually putting out corn for them, so every time I had to back out my driveway, I had to look out that I wasn't running over the geese. I didn't see the town of Shererville coming out and capturing these geese and taking them out somewhere because they were a threat to society like I'm being told these chickens in someone's yard are going to be. If we got, I mean, if you're going to get rid of the chickens, you got to get rid of the geese. If you're going to get rid of the geese, you got to get rid of the water, so drain all the land and drain all the fountains in the area so that we don't have geese anymore. As far as the other animals, I have a big field next to the bank, wooded area. I'm getting raccoons, I'm getting rabbits, I'm getting fox, I'm getting possums. I see them running in my backyard all the time. But it's nature. It's natural. They're wild animals. I don't condone feeding on them or anything like that. But if I wanted to put chickens in my backyard because of this, I'd put them in my garage. And I've seriously considered putting them in my garage to see if you guys are going to come out and tell me I can't have them inside. Because I've got a neighbor close to me who has a parrot about this big, and you want to talk about loud? When that thing decides to start squawking, you can hear it. What are you going to do? Are you going to start getting rid of the parrots and then the parakeets? You know, why are you picking on chickens? Because someone wants to be able to afford eggs. When this situation first came eggs were costing about eight dollars a dozen. Now they're way down in price. But again, if someone wants to reasonably source their eggs, I don't see any reason for standing in their way. Also, Shererville is looking at a big, according to what I've read from the Democratic material that I've seen, a three-point-five million dollar shortfall. I'm not sure how much time that is, but you have a chance here to actually start to tax the chickens. You can have approved coops made in Shererville for the people who want to raise these chickens. And it could be a, a source of income for the town of Shererville, along with the people saving money on buying the eggs from the store. My final point is.
Time's up, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Sheila Majeki, seventy-four nineteen Harvest Drive, Shererville, Indiana.
Excuse me, Sheila, can you just point that microphone down towards you? Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sheila Majeki, seventy-four nineteen Harvest Drive, Shererville, Indiana. I think that there has to be some common sense entered into this. You're, you're saying a lot of things that are for an entire town. We're talking specifically about one acre properties. If you want to talk about salmonella, you can get that at the grocery store, too, so that's not even consequential. I agree with Kevin as far as the geese. You know, no one's picking up the geese. There's plenty of them by my house, trust me. They live there all the time. I'm doing an Irish jig, going down the street, avoiding the crap with my dogs, so I know they're there. And nobody's picking them up. My dogs could get sick. Nobody cares. But because someone has an acre, over an acre property, and they want to have a chicken, we're all going to be doing the happy dance here. This just doesn't make any sense. Let's be common sense. Let's say an acre of property, I can agree with that. I think you can have it far away from someone's fence. I think you can have a fence. I think you can have a chicken coop with a fence. There's a lot of variables here. Instead of trying to be like communists over other people, we have to be nice to one another. We have to live together. Your beliefs might not be my beliefs. My beliefs might not be your beliefs, but we can all work together. Thank you very much for your time, and I do appreciate the hard work of the council, and I love my firemen and policemen here, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. State your name and your address for the record, please.
Dawn Light, two-two-five Deer Trail Lane. Just wanted to give my opinion on the chickens. I live in a town home, so I couldn't have, couldn't get chickens if I wanted to, but I would. I believe that you should have one acre of land. I should, I do believe that you should have a fenced-in area so it doesn't bother the other neighbors. I believe that it should be a certain amount away from the other neighbor's land, so it doesn't disturb them. I believe they should have a chicken coop, and it should be well-maintained, otherwise they should get a fine. I should, I do believe that they should be checked on at a certain amount of time after they have their coop, and I do believe that it would be good for them to have it. I don't, if I could have one, I would do it. I don't see why we should deter someone from having one. I don't see why we should deter them from having it. I really don't. I think it's, I, I think it's very communistic. I don't, I don't believe in it. Sorry.
Hey, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Laura Gorola, eighteen thirty-one Govert Drive. I hear people talk about the noise of chickens. No one talks about the noise of dogs. People have dogs, they bark all day. They leave the dogs outside. They don't pick up the dog poop. It smells. But that's okay. I don't see an ordinance in the town saying no one can have a dog. Feral cats, people that let their cats out, no one says you can't have a cat. You call animal control on dogs, they say, oh, maybe they go talk to them, maybe they don't. It's a dog. We all love dogs. I don't understand the difference with chickens. Chickens actually produce eggs, which we all know are extremely. Chickens actually produce eggs, which we all know are extremely more better for us than the eggs we buy in the grocery store. I don't get it. It's food. I, I don't understand. My daughter has a chicken coop. You know what? I go there many times. I never smell it. I don't even hear the chickens. And an acre of land, you're not going to see that coop from the street. I, I think it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? State your name and address for the record, sir.
J. Cole, 84 Reader Drive. I agree with that last lady. If somebody wants to have chickens and they're a responsible owner, it should be no problem. And as far as people panicking about diseases and all this, give me a break. We got wild turkeys running through the neighborhoods. We got all these Canadian geese flying around. Backyard chickens aren't going to spread disease. And I think that if, as long as you're a responsible owner and you take care of them, it should not be a problem. And I see no reason why people shouldn't be allowed to have them.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Okay. State your name and your address for the record, sir.
Vince McLennahan, 1600 Klein Avenue. I teach science in seventh and eighth grade at Highland Christian School. We have a chicken coop right in the foyer between classrooms. We are able to teach, we're able to take care of the chickens, we're able to educate the kids on how to raise the animals and do it properly. And it is zero distraction, and it's just a wonderful experience. I would love for my four kids to be able to do that in our own backyard. We have four acres. And, you know, there's animals all around us. And just for our families to have the opportunity to raise our kids and teach them responsibility and get some eggs out of the deal is, I just don't know why that would not be allowed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone else? This'll be the last call before we close the floor. Anyone else? Seeing or hearing no one, the floor is now closed.
Mr. President, I do have a letter that I wanted to read on this issue as well. Do you want to read it now, or do you want to wait till we bring up that ordinance?
You can read it now.
This was a letter that I received from Adrian Shabbitt, 413 East Joliet Street, Shererville, Indiana, 46375, to the Shererville Town Council. Thank you for taking the time to review this potential ordinance on chickens. It was very disheartening last year when this was discussed for a variance for a family because the voting seemed to be more about sticking with party lines and not what makes sense for Shererville. I'm glad we can look past, we can look past letters next to our names and work for the residents. I know having chickens isn't important for many of you on the town council, nor for the vast majority of residents in Shererville, but for many, it is important. Cats and dogs are not my thing, but I respect the fact that for others it is. Because I'm not a fan of cats or dogs, I'm not out petitioning the city to ban them. I respect what others want to do on their property. There are many ordinances that apply to only a small group of people. This one shouldn't be tossed aside because it doesn't meet a certain threshold of how many people it affects. I live right down the road here on Joliet and have about 350 feet of frontage. Before I mow along the road, I have to walk the area to pick up litter and dog poo people leave behind. I don't believe I'll have that issue if any of my neighbors have chickens. I also have 22 neighbors whose property touched my property. When I'm out enjoying my yard, the sound of dogs barking all day is normal. In fact, some of those neighbors have aggressive dogs that are a concern if they were to get through the fence and come in my yard, since I have younger children. I don't think I've ever seen a report about aggressive chickens mauling a neighbor. And the noise isn't an issue with chickens. At the end of the day, this is a lot of energy over something that isn't going to be a big deal. Paul at Region News isn't going to be posting on his Facebook page about chicken issues in Shererville. If someone is willing to put in the time, energy, and financial investment to home chickens, it's likely they'll be responsible owners and their neighbors won't even realize they have chickens unless they benefit from free eggs. If there's an owner not following the ordinance or abusing it, put in language to reprimand them and take away their ability to have them, but I doubt you'll run into that. Thank you, Adrian Shabbitt.
Hey, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, with that being said, we'll go on to Old Business, which is ordinance 2027, an ordinance amending Town Ordinance Number 1549, being an ordinance for the main control and regulation of animals within the town of Shererville. Lake County, Indiana, repealing all ordinances and parts in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency establishment regulations for raising chickens, providing penalties for violations thereof, repealing all ordinances and town code provisions or parts thereof in conflict herewith and in all matters related thereto. This is the second reading. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance will allow chickens and ducks in the area with larger than one acre land with restrictions such as no roosters, must remain 60 feet from the neighboring living structures, including decks, porches, and pools, unless the coop and run is screened by privacy fence and natural screening no less than six feet in height. And then the coop and run may be located no less than 40 feet from neighboring living structures, including decks, porches, and pools. A coop and run must be provided and must remain in sanitary conditions.
Thank you. Pleasure to the board.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2027.
Second. I have a motion and a second. I'm going to call for.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. As stated, as stated in the previous meetings that we've had, and after receiving 100 calls, hundreds of calls since that meeting two months ago, I just want to remind everyone, just like a couple of the speakers did tonight, that Shererville is, is not a rural area. And Shererville's not a farm town. And we're talking about a town that's got 31,000 people. And as a councilman, I have to represent 31,000 people's interests. And I have an issue here that might possibly be involved with 1% or 2% of the population. So therefore, this ordinance, I feel, is a bad ordinance, which is explained by several of the speakers, mostly when you talk about chickens and fowl, other fowls, ducks and everything. Also, allowing one acre allowance, those houses that have one acre back up against subdivisions and residents that aren't one acre. So when you think of one acre, you think of that person that's out in the rural area that has an acre or two out, out in the rural area. The one acre residents in Shererville, and I used to live in a house in Shillam that had one acre, we still backed up, I still backed up the three, three neighbors. So, so to say one acre is a lot of land, yes, it is a lot of land. And, and the way this ordinance is written, allowing it to only be 40 feet, 40 feet from me to that wall away when you have an acre, that number should have been 80 feet or 100 feet when you have an acre of land. An acre of land's a lot of land. So the numbers are, the numbers are way too close to satisfy any, any neighbor or any other subdivisions nearby. Plus, I feel, I still feel that it's trying to pass special legislation for, for people that have one acre. I know there's, I know there's other people around town that want, and we heard speakers tonight that, that say they want, they want chickens in their normal subdivision households and stuff. So to pass legislation for a special group or a small group, that's, that's not a good practice to get into. This, this ordinance also doesn't really talk about, much about the health issues and doesn't even say that if, if chickens are really approved in, in, by like any of the, the health departments or anything, if they're really approved by, in subdivision. So, so I feel, I feel it's a bad, it's a bad ordinance. And it also doesn't even talk about who's going to monitor and how we, how we're going to monitor it. We would keep busy, we would keep busy going back and forth. Are we going to check them every year? That should have been in the ordinance. Are we going to make them have permits? That should be in the ordinance. This is, this is a really bad, this is a bad ordinance to try to pass anything. Therefore, I still will be totally against passing this ordinance, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Anyone else have comments?
No, I agree with Mr. Schmidt. A lot of the things that I had in my notes, I would echo exactly what he's saying. One of my main concerns was, and I asked this in the last meeting, was who, who does, who would police this? How do we know who's going to go back and check on the coops? Just because it's built a certain way, when it comes up, who's to say it's not going to change? There's not going to be more chickens added, more than we're supposed to have. So I'm not comfortable with that part of it, not knowing whose jurisdiction it's going to fall under. Is it code enforcement? Is it animal control? Is it who, who would, he would handle that? So I don't think that is spelled out enough for us to feel comfortable with that as well. And I do want to thank everybody that spoke tonight. I think the fact that we can have this conversation and that both sides can get up and speak, and we take that under careful consideration, we appreciate that. So thank you for doing your homework and coming tonight.
Yeah, what I heard tonight, of the 11 people that spoke, seven spoke in favor and four against. My math is correct.
Mr. Troxel, roll call in the vote, please.
Yes. We have Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinitis?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Getzloff?
Before I give my vote here, I want to tell, I want to say thank you to everybody who did take the time out to come. You know, it's always good to make sure that you're concerned about your town, just like everyone up here is. But I have to say that it was very surprising to me on how many people have contacted me through emails, personally made an effort to come to my house, had conversations after church with people. So with all that being said, I have to always say that we do, like Mr. Schmidt said, we always come and we have to do what is best for the 30,000 and not just a handful. So at this present time, I would have to say no. So my vote is no. So it is a 3-2 vote. A motion does not carry.
That's all we need to do, correct?
No.
No?
No, you have to make a motion to deny it in order to deny the adoption.
All right, do I have a motion to deny?
Motion to deny.
Second.
Mr. Troxel, roll call again.
Yes, on the motion to deny, Mr. Johnson?
Obviously, no.
Mr. Conley?
Nope.
Mrs. Arvinitis?
Yes, deny.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Once again, thank you to everyone who's come out. Under New Business Resolution 2025-6 is a resolution adopting an amendment title of six plan slash nondiscrimination agreement in accordance with the terms and conditions and requirements under applicable federal law and all matters related thereto. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is a plan that we currently have on file that we've updated due to some changes that NDOT made in order to comply with the new updates. And a few minor changes, such as notifying parties that are involved in complaints that arise, like census data, changes that occurred since our last update. So I'm looking for your consideration on approving this updated plan at this time. Thank you.
Okay, pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve, Resolution 2025-6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 5-0. Resolution 2025-7 is a resolution of Town Council of the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing execution delivery of equipment scheduled to the master, the master equipment lease slash purchase program in agreement with the Bank of America, National Association for the acquisition, financing and leasing of vehicles and equipment under the same terms specified herewithin, as well as authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents, requiring in connection therewith authorizing all other actions required for the transaction, contemplation, and all matters relating thereto. Mr. Troxel?
Yes, Mr. President, yes. Back in May, you authorized myself through resolution to seek financing options for this $2.1 million vehicle and equipment financing. It'll be for four years and with, I just seeked out seven different financing entities regarding this financing, and I did receive five back. And of the five, Bank of America was the most responsive and, and less costly at 3.88% for financing for four years. The payment would be from various funds that are affected from various departments for equipment and vehicles. So with the positive motion moved forward, this basically allows the president and vice president to sign off on the financing for these documents to move forward with purchasing of these vehicles and equipment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Troxel.
Welcome.
Move to approve, Mr. President, Resolution 2025-7.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Oh.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Next one is considered variance of use of allowed construction of a 10.5-foot by 36-foot off-premises advertising structure, billboard on site, the Board of Zoning Case Number 25-6-9, the petitioner Lamar Advertising, Sean Pettit. Location is at 8016 US 41, Alborn Scenic Edition Lot 1, BZA favorable recommendation 40. Is Mr. Pettit here? Okay.
Good evening, council members. Sean Pettit, I'm the real estate manager for Lamar Advertising, 9900 Georgia Street in Crown Point, Indiana. Tonight, we are asking for the variance of use to be approved by the Town Council, which received a favorable BZA recommendation last month. This is on the west side at the new Lansing Heating and Air Conditioning Building that Todd Batma has constructed at US 41 and 80th Court.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit, can you, can you tell us some of the boards that have come down over the last couple of years?
Uh, over the last couple of years, it, we haven't traded many in. We did work with town management on removing the sign for the Kennedy Avenue Project, taking it out of the EJNE railroad right-of-way. When I first started with Lamar and Mr. Volkman was town manager, and Michael will remember this, being on the council, we did trade in a lot of boards in order to install some of our LED digital display units. We took down smaller outdated versions, what we call six-by-12 eight-sheet poster units. There were some on both sides of the railroad right-of-way at US 30 and where Roland on RV would be. We took down, by lessor's choice, we took one down with the Bernie Schubert property over by North Woods subdivision on the north side of US 30, where the Ziegler development is going. I do want to thank the council because we were here about a year and a half ago, and allowing us, because Ziegler wanted the billboard moved, Methodist Hospital took the board at their care facility, and we constructed that new static. That's the exact same type of structure that will be going up on Mr. Batma's. We have since, during the pandemic, taken down a poster at Stan's Garage. We took down a bulletin at Stan's Garage. Again, lessor choice, the lease ran out, they did not wish to renew the lease. So off the top of my head, councilman, I couldn't tell you an exact number. I will say, and Mike and Tom know this, I, I used to work for the town of Shererville a long time ago in, in a darker hair day, I guess. I've been with Lamar 20 years. We have had an outstanding relationship with the town of Shererville. Currently, Mr. Novosich benefits by the sign that's up by Target Rentals, where you folks are guaranteed every quarter, two weeks of free advertising on that board for park and recreation events. We also offer space available advertising on all the digitals. If there's a water main break, if there's something special in town that Jim or the administration want to advertise, we always do that. We do that in my hometown of Maryville. We're, we're in the process of launching a MyMaryville app that I've, I've noticed are on our digital billboards in Maryville right now. So Lamar's been very community-oriented in advertising and allowing communities to use that advertising space. So it's usually on a space-available basis. When all eight slots of the digital are not sold out, we offer that to the community to use for whatever you want to promote. We've had Highland Police Officer recruitment, we've had Hobart Police Officer recruitment. So a variety of different uses by the different communities that we operate. so a variety of different uses by the different communities that we operate in.
Couple things, Mr. President. Is this, Mr. Gorman, is this a replacement sign or is this a, a net add?
In that area, it's kind of a replacement sign because the one came down at Stan's in 2022. So...
Okay, good.
It would kind of be that, that area. It's right across the street.
So, Mr. Pettit, would you put some landscaping around, around the base of that sign?
Uh, that's, I believe that's a requirement. We did that with the Methodist sign, councilman, yes. We would, we would be willing to do that, and I think that's in the ordinance, Jim, isn't it?
It is. It's typically a monument sign, but yeah, we would like to see it around the big sign.
Yeah, we did that before, I believe.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
This is, this is actually, Mr. Pettit, this is two signs, right? One facing north and one facing south?
Yes.
So it's a single pedestal with two signs.
Single monocle column, yes.
And the static signs?
Both static, yes.
Will they be lighted?
Yes, they will be.
So they'll be illuminated all the time?
Yes.
In, in the evenings. Is that going to dim so that we don't have neighbors or anybody complaining about the lighting?
They would, they would shine up similar to what they did when, when Stan's was operating on the east side of US 41.
And Stan's had two signs there?
Yes, they did.
And those were both removed and now this is, this is one pedestal, two signs.
Right. Basically, as we talk in the industry, it's, it's coverage for, for the, you know, the demand that the salespeople are finding in both regional and local businesses asking for, you know, more signage.
Yeah, we, we've got a lot of, a lot of billboards in Sherreville, so I'm, I'm not excited about more, but I, I respect that we're, we're replacing what was taken down there and, and understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move to approve the variance, Board of Zoning Case 25-6-9.
Okay, we have a motion?
Can you add that condition to it, Mr. Schmidt, about the landscaping?
Findings of fact and condition.
And, and we'll add the, the landscaping on the bottom of it, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion...
Do you agree to that, Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
You do agree. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sean, that's on.
Do we have to include findings of fact on the case?
Yes, that's what he said.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. Well, it didn't come out that way, but that's what he meant. So, all right, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those signify by saying aye.
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 Um...
It passes.
Yeah, it passes.
All our favor passes.
I just lost you right there. All right.
Ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
You're welcome, Sean.
Consider acceptance of donations for $4,552.78, Mr. Troxel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Through the month of June, following in-kind and monetary donations were accepted to the Animal Control Fund. Carolene donated cat treats with in-kind value of $10. Anonously, dog treats and towels came in in-kind at $65. Anonymous Tidy Cat in-kind donation of $30. Ramirez Dog Bed in-kind value of $20. Irene Kitten Cat Food was valued at $100. In-kind Larry Miller Cat Litter was valued at $74. Perina Company donated two 50-pound bags of dog food. That in-kind value was $200. Jason Traina donated cat food, treats, wet and dry food. That value was $115. And anonymously, wet dog food was valued at $35. Anonously, cat and dog food, blankets, wet kitten food. That value was $295. For total in-kind donations for the month of June to the Animal Control was $944. The Police Department received an in-kind donation from Kathy LaRue, five dozen crumble cookies. Aaron McManus Longhorn Steakhouse gift card for Officer Ruzga is a thank you. That valued at $25. Leela Ewen, 20, 20 Otis Spunk Meyer cookies and 84 JJ Bakery hand apple pies. The in-kind value was $83.78. Total in-kind to the Police Department for the month of June was $283.78. Donation to our National Night, National Night Out Fund. Rhonda Clark, One LLC donated $100. Caleb S. Johnson Law LLC donated $200. Capri Pizza donated $100. Cali Beauty, 46375 Inc. donated $300. Best Western Cross Road Inn donated $100. Forty One Cleaners donated $200. Crossroads Family Dental, $100. Ogden Welding Systems, Inc. donated $50. Marushak Appliance, Inc. donated $25. Eckhart America Corporation donated $200. Sherreville Studio, Inc. Basecamp Fitness donated $250. John R. Ike Jr. donated $100. List Body and Paint Car Star donated $250. Clinata Properties LLC donated $250. We have Big Bang Fireworks donated $300. Crossroads Storage LLC donated $100. Hoosier, Inc. Agency, $500. Granite Masters Incorporated, $100. Chick-fil-A Lisa's Mobile Kitchen donated $100. Total to the National Night Out for the month of June, $3,325. Recapping total in-kind donations, $1,027.78. Monetary, $3,325. Total, grand total is $4,552.78 for the month of June. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve?
Second. The motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 5-0. At this time, it will take any business from the floor. Any business from the floor.
Jeff Menard, 1279 Poppy Field. I wanted to say thanks to whose idea it was on Joliet to put restrictions on the road. I did see that work slowing people down. I use the trail a lot, so I appreciate that. I think on 73rd, we need to do something there with that tri accident was, like rumble strips or something and a flashing light and stuff to, to make that aware because people are so distracted nowadays on their cell phones and stuff. Really need to do something about 73rd and the bicycle pack.
Just see Mr. Gorman.
Pardon?
Just see Mr. Gorman after the...
Mr. Menard, it is a county, it's county road. It's county property. The county is aware of the incident and they're taking measures currently to try and fix that issue.
All right, thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Business from the floor? Business from the floor? Please state your name and address, sir, for the record.
All right, my name's Colin Zagovic. I live at 605 213th and Dyer. I'm also a full-time firefighter for Sherreville and also the secretary for the union. Good evening. Hopefully, this will be ending on a good note. So I'm here today just to kind of make a, take the time for public comment to invite everybody and let everybody know about the inaugural Sherreville Firefighters Golf Outing on August 22nd at Sherwood Golf. Signing will be at 8:00 AM. Shotgun start will be at 9:00 o'clock. Breakfast and lunch will be, will be provided. This is going to be a really fun outing. I just wanted everybody to know that. We have gotten some amazing sponsors, especially some in town already, so that's awesome. We also teamed up with Backswing Events. They're going to send a pro out to kind of get some competition going on. We also have a $1,000 home one sponsor. And then any entrant into that challenge will be entered into a raffle from Promo Sports for tickets to the 2026 Masters. So I think that's pretty cool. Um, we'll also be hosting a live and silent auction. If you haven't seen on our Facebook, follow us on Facebook. We've already announced some pretty cool stuff, including a private yacht charter. Um, we just got a grill donated. Uh, we have a lot of sports jerseys that have been donated as well, um, to the union to auction off. But all this money will be going to the union, but we're also going to be donating a lot of that money to Project Fire Buddies and Hoosier Burn Camp. If you're not aware what Hoosier Burn Camp is, it's a local one that's out in Muncie, that Muncie area. They provide experiences to kids that have been traumatized by burns and fire-related injuries. Project Fire Buddies, uh, that's kind of a newer one that we started about a couple of years ago. Uh, it's actually really cool. Kind of, they, what they do is they provide experiences to kids that have critical illnesses like disease, like cancer, muscular dystrophy, a bunch of other stuff like that. Um, basically just things make-a-wish with firefighters. Um, but yeah, we'd really love for everybody to come out, um, really for residents, local businesses, town leaders. It's a great way to, to advertise. Like I said, we're going to have this really big auction that hopefully will raise a lot of money for these great, for these great organizations and everything. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the floor? Any other comments from the floor?